This meeting is being recorded.
So, hi everyone. Thank you so much for joining tonight. We're really excited to be here to talk more about advocacy and the creative economy. The Vermont Arts Council and the Vermont Creative Network have been working formally since 2016, but since long before that, on promoting not only artists and artist grants, ensuring that the Vermont Arts Council is working with cross-sector partners and with other folks in the cultural sector. Also, and if folks can mute themselves, that would be great. I'm going to go ahead and mute you if that's okay. Thank you. And so, we've been doing that for a while. The Vermont Creative Network officially got started in 2016. We were created by the Vermont Legislature to be the Creative Economy Network across the state to promote the creative economy. Since then, we have created the Create VT Action Plan, which was an epic collaborative process over multiple years to engage folks all across the state, thousands of people, at dozens and dozens of listening sessions and conversations, to make sure that we figured out a strategic plan forward for how to expand resources for the creative economy, making sure that we are creating networks and support systems amongst creatives and folks in the creative sector, and making sure that we are promoting workforce development, professional development, and educational opportunities for this sector so that we can continue to move forward together and so that we can get access to the kinds of resources like the ARPA grants that we're going to talk just a little bit about at the end of this session. And then, we also talked about in our previous session earlier this week about strategic plans and the municipal ARPA money. So, if you haven't seen that session, please check it out on the Vermont Arts Council website. It's on the VCN events page, and it'll end up recorded. You can watch it live there. So, thanks so much for joining. I am going to now make sure that we take a minute to acknowledge where we are and to say that at the Vermont Arts Council, we always like to begin with a land acknowledgement. I'd like to acknowledge that I'm joining you today and likely those of you who are calling in from the traditional and unsurrendered territory of the Abenaki people in the state we now call Vermont. I'd like to offer this land acknowledgement. The Vermont Arts Council recognizes that we live and gather here in Abenaki lands, the traditional and unsurrendered homeland of the Abenaki people, one of five Wabanaki nations who have a continual presence here and since time immemorial. Thank you so much for being here, everyone. I'm so excited to share our resources with you about how to best advocate for the creative sector. I'm going to now start sharing my screen. But before I do that, I want to say that I am a white woman. I have longish strawberry blonde graying hair with some light green curtains behind me and a slightly sneaking behind me potted plant and a navy turtleneck that I'm wearing. So, here we go. Share screen. Okay. So, let me hide some of these here so that this isn't quite as cluttered of a view, but where I can still kind of work through it a little bit more easily. So, today, we're going to talk about From Town Councils to the State House: Effective Creative Economy Advocacy in Vermont, work that you all have been doing for a long time. This is my contact information. My last name can be kind of a juicy. It's Johanna D. Graffin-Reed, and I'm the Vermont Creative Network Manager. And you can find my contact information on the Vermont Arts Council website, and my email is provided here. I also just want to flag, while I'm sharing my screen, I can't actually see you all. So, if at any point you need to just shout out, please don't hesitate to unmute yourself and say, "Hey, there's a problem." Or, "By the way, you know, could you just stop for one quick second?" We are going to leave time for question and answer at the end. I want to make sure to do that at the end so that we can turn off the recording before we do the Q and A. Not because there's invaluable information that can be shared during that time, but because we want to give folks a little bit of privacy to have conversations that might be specific to their communities during that space. So, by the way, anyone, if there's any issues, please hesitate, don't hesitate, excuse me, to just shout out. Here's our introductions and our conversation for today. We are a little bit behind, but I am going to make sure to keep talking slowly. And we're going to get through all of this great content. So, you know, we want to talk today about why are we advocating for the creative sector? What are our real root reasons there? We also wanted quickly to talk about who's in the creative sector, who's a Vermont creative, and where you all can find research and resources. I want to dig into a little bit to the Create VT Action Plan and the Creative Economy documents that we have there on our website that you all can use as important resources in this advocacy. And then, I want to give you all some launching off points, so key opportunities from local to regional to statewide about how to engage in advocacy across Vermont. For folks who were able to make our previous sessions, either the strategic plans and municipal ARPA session earlier this week or the statewide advocacy session yesterday, please feel free if you need to hop off at that point or stick around and have a more detailed conversation than we may have gotten to. And if you all would like to revisit those, again, they'll be on the Vermont Arts Council website, on the Create VT page, excuse me, the VCN page, on the events section. Excuse me so much. Okay. We're going to get going. So, I want to quickly talk about the Creative Network resources. This is where you can find them. I'm going to mention this again later in the presentation, but it's just really important that we cite that there's so much research out there, and I'm going to come back to this page later. So, why should you be a creative sector advocate? If you're here, I think you already know. But really, what we want to talk about is that success in being a creative sector advocate really looks like celebrating history, right? We talk about the fact that we're not just an arts organization, but we're also a historical and cultural organization. Part of the importance of being an advocate is making sure to ground ourselves in our communities in Vermont and ensuring that we're celebrating the work that's happened here and the incredible cultural and artist phenomenons that have happened in this state and that continue to move forward and make us one of the most vibrant creative community fabrics across the country. We also have some phenomenal cross-sector partnerships. So, at the VCN, one of our key points is to make sure that we're not just working with creatives, which again, we're going to dig into what the VCN really thinks about as creatives here in just a second. Not just strict artists, but a lot of folks. And we like to work with people all across the economy and all across our communities. We like to work with folks who are in the outdoor industry and people who are in hospitality. We sit down at economic roundtables and make sure that, for example, the creative sector is represented as a key economic zone. But we also make sure to advocate with other folks who are in housing issues, for example, about the way in which arts and cultural organizations can collaborate to solve these kinds of crises that we know are ongoing in Vermont. Because we're not separate as part of the creative economy. We're part of a woven fabric, again, of our entire communities, which hits on all of these other issues, whether or not it's housing, childcare, workforce development. We are here to make sure that we're supporting how the creative economy is solving and working with other folks across these sectors to promote the Vermont life. We also do innovative problem solving. So, we like to make sure that we're thinking through how to really dig into the issues that Vermont creatives are facing. So, if folks need more professional development, for example, are there opportunities where we can really support educational systems? Are there situations in which we could come and speak to a municipality to, for example, seek some additional federal funding? There's some really innovative problem solving that's happening out there across the state, and we want to make sure that we're amplifying that and that we're bringing people together who are working on those challenges. So, we're building again that local fabric, that Vermont fabric of the creative economy. One of the most important things that I want to talk about is making sure that we are stepping up and providing more equitable support for our artists and our creative economy. The more that we can advocate for the creative sector, especially advocating on equitable access to resources, grant opportunities, state and federal funding, the better we're all going to be as a Vermont community. We're an incredible community of a lot of diverse folks who are coming from different places and who have been here for many generations. And we are also a whole sector of the creative economy that we each dig into a little bit differently. So, I want to dig into now, who are Vermont creatives according to the Vermont Creative Network, but also according to us, right? We're the ones who did this Create VT Action Plan with a lot of listening sessions, and this is what we heard from you. So, reflecting it back, who are Vermont creatives? It's folks who are in the performing arts, the literary arts, the visual arts and fine crafts, like we usually think of when we think of the arts. But it's also folks in specialty foods and design heritage and people who are working in libraries and elder care facilities across the state. It's folks who are providing childcare as part of their arts and after-school programs. It's ensuring that we're making ourselves known as part of the key aspect of our communities, right? Again, we're really weaving ourselves in and just raising our hands to our neighbors and saying, "Listen, you know, we're all amazing folks who are working in these different ways, and we're part of the creative economy. We're part of the creative sector, and we're deeply woven into the foundation of this community, and we want to expand some resources here." I want to highlight the fact that the Vermont creative sector generates 9.3% of all jobs in Vermont, according to a 2019 study. I'm going to come back to where to be able to find those resources like that study later on in the presentation, but just wanted to point that out as a key fact that's really important when you're advocating either on the local but especially on the statewide level with folks. And again, we have this incredible plan called the Create VT Action Plan. So, I'm going to quickly take us back to our agenda just to ground us in this conversation. And so, we've talked now about our introductions, topics and overview, why advocate for the creative sector, and who we are. We're now at about three minutes before our time, which is great. So, I want to take a second to just show you on our website where you can find some really great research, resources, and opportunities. So, when you are talking with folks either on the local level or the regional level or on the statewide level, and you want some information about what is the creative economy? What is this Vermont Creative Network? Who are all of these folks? But also, things like our, you know, entire Rural Prosperity Study that was done as a Rural Action Guide in 2019 from the National Governors Association. We have the Bennington County Cultural Plan, which is a Shining Star Regional Plans, which is another topic that, again, I'll get into later in the presentation. We have AEP 5 Studies, which is our Local Economic Impact Studies. And we also have additional resources on and on and on into this page. So, I really recommend that folks take a minute, dig into this research. And also, if you have any questions about what would be best to talk with your local community about, your regional planning association, your legislator, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we'd be happy to point you to the best, most relevant information on this page. We're happy to serve as a resource. I also want to highlight the creative sector toolbox. So, when we are talking through how to be amazing advocates here in the state of Vermont, there are some incredible resources that already exist on the Create VT page and that we can build out here. So, I also want to just say that, you know, when we're handing things out, there's a great one-pager that we already have that drills into the Create VT Action Plan. That is our statewide plan that was, I mentioned previously, created over many years with a lot of input from folks all across the state. And here's a great toolkit page that you can give to any decision-maker that highlights some of the key economic data here that I highlighted before. So, this 9.3 of all jobs, 41,000 creative sector jobs. We dig a little bit into each of the segments that I talked about earlier, those seven segments of the creative economy. So, not just the high arts, which are amazing, but also, you know, museums, historical societies, and preservation, libraries, et cetera. And so, here's some of our other creative sector jobs that we mentioned in that drill down. Really important to show. I also want to highlight the Create VT Action Plan. I have maybe assumed that a lot of the folks who are on this call already know about the Create VT Action Plan because you know about the Vermont Creative Network. But I just want to revisit it really quickly, just in case it's helpful. So, the Create VT Action Plan can be found on our website here. It's a full detailed report about the state of the creative sector, and it also has some really key summaries. So, similar to that advocacy page that you are totally welcome to use at any advocacy sessions, we also have this two-pager that's available that's a detailed summary of the Create VT Action Plan. And that, again, is our statewide roadmap to supporting the creative economy. This has on the back of it, which I really like, our vision and our goals for how we're going to support that creative economy. So, in addition to those economic numbers and jobs numbers that some of our other resources have, this two-pager can be really great to use with folks when they're saying, "Yeah, but what are you really doing or how can I really plug in?" We really think that the creative economy is essential to the cultural and economic vitality of Vermont. This document also has some really great messaging on it. So, our wonderful and incredible staff at the Arts Council and our communications team have done a phenomenal job of gathering a lot of information from communities about how we want to talk about the creative economy. And these documents are a great example of it. So, if you're ever looking for like, "Hey, what do I really say about the creative economy? Or how do I really describe the creative sector? Why is it important?" These documents can be incredible resources for that. So, just want to shout that out there. It also highlights on the bottom our advocacy agenda, our network agenda, and our local agenda. These are things that are really important if you're building a team, for example, and they want to know how to get more engaged in your advocacy work for the creative sector. This is a great document for that because it has these broken out right at the bottom. Our Create VT Action Plan, also grounding it again in the data, has some incredible briefs on the segments that we talked about, those seven segments of the creative economy and our six zones across the state. So, the way that we work in Vermont at the Arts Council and at the Creative Network is that we have six-zone agents across the state that work regionally to support local communities and getting more engaged. That also means that we have some zone-specific data for y'all to use in your advocacy, especially on the local level and with regional folks as well as with statewide advocacy efforts. We want to make sure that we're talking about our segment briefs here. There we go. So, based on each segment, we have a snapshot of it, based on the segment size and growth and also the type of employment. Here, for example, is the Culture and Heritage Segment statewide. So, it has the breakdown by your zone, if you're interested, but it also has the type of employment. So, if you are trying to reach out to an organization, for example, who, you know, are working in the culture and heritage space, here's a whole list of folks that you might consider reaching out to. And here's, you know, just some of the segment occupations that are listed in the tax codes. So, when we're thinking through how to allocate the Creative Futures Grants, for example, which is our statewide ARPA grant system that we were allocating now through the Arts Council for the creative economy and for creatives across the state, these are some of the tax codes that we would look at for this segment. So, this is getting a little in the weeds now, I want to acknowledge that, about each of these economic areas. But it's really important, whenever you're meeting with decision-makers on any level, some folks are, you know, really interested in stories and how it's impacting communities from a personal perspective, from a leadership perspective, say, you know, "How is this impacting a library in your space?" But some folks really like the numbers. And as someone who personally really likes the numbers, I love that we have these detailed reports that we can provide on any segment across the state. It's also a great document, so if you follow me through. You know, this goes through all of our creative segments, those seven segments that I mentioned. We also get to our zone briefs at the bottom of this document, which is part of why it's great to make sure to hand it out to folks who are in decision-making positions. You can show, you know, where you all are locally based and say you are in our Addison-Rutland Zone, where our Zone Agent Kelly Hickey has been doing an incredible job working with their Economic Council and working with folks in regional planning there. And you can talk specifically about how in Addison and Rutland Counties, these creative jobs are looking, what's happening in our creative segments, what types of employment are there, and really thinking about what's growth, but also what needs support in that space. So, I always like to highlight these documents because there's so much incredible research that went into creating the Create VT Action Plan, so much so that actually, we won the Vermont Planners Association Award this year for the best plan of the year, as well as the North New England Planners Association Award for the action plan here. So, I like to highlight this as a really great resource, especially if you're considering writing letters to a decision-maker or you are thinking about showing up and doing a public talk, and you want to make sure that you have all of your best data. This is some really good information for everyone to have. Makes it nice and easy. Make sure that there's some really concrete grounding information that you can provide to folks, and that way, there's a cited document that you can rely on too. Makes it nice and simple, just include, you know, where to find it on the website. Nice and simple for decision-makers too. So, I always like to put out them. Now, let me check where we're at. We've gone through the creative economy and the Create VT Action Plan. I'm actually really thrilled that we're going a little quicker than I had planned because I want to leave a lot of time for this Q and A. And now, you all have already made it through, going through why advocate for the creative sector? Who is the creative sector? Again, those seven segments. Where to find research? This whole page here on our website. Also, you know, where to find some great resources, like our toolkit, which lives here, here, and then Toolbox, in case you're ever interested in where to find these advocacy resources. Very simple, again, digs back into the research there. And, you know, now we can really talk about our key opportunities for the creative economy. So, there's our resources again. First of all, on a local level, we're really digging into strategic plans in the creative sector. So, in 2016, there was a study that was done by the Vermont Arts Council, which showed several results. But I want to dig into first, why would we work on strategic plans? Why is this something that's really important? And why is this something that we should consider doing? Strategic plans are where we set local priorities. It's where we all come together to agree and say, "This is what we really want for our community." But it's also where, when we're writing grants with, say, regional planning associations or when we are going to the Vermont Legislature and saying that a local community in a legislator's district supports the cultural sector, we can cite this plan and say, "Look, it's in our government documents. It's a really important way to make sure that we're in writing as something that's supported along with hospitality, the agricultural sector, and so many other economic sectors that, again, we walk and work with in our cross-sector collaboration." So, these cultural plans can provide local governments with powerful tools for setting cultural policies on the municipal level as well as a vehicle to organize the capacities of arts and cultural organizations, their supporters and artists, to make a difference in their communities. This is by Tom Berup, and it can be found on the American Arts Blog. This is part of the Larger Creative Community Builders Handbook that is also a great resource for folks. But I'll dig into municipal planning a little bit more in just a minute. That's one of our key initiatives this year, as well as making sure that we're advocating for ensuring that the creative funds that are possible to be used for the ARPA monies are being allocated from ARPA monies. So, we'll dig into that again in a second. I also want to talk about our statewide priorities. So, this is a huge change for the Vermont Legislature this year. We have 51 new legislators. And it's really important that this year, we do more education than ever to make sure that folks know what is the creative economy? What is the creative sector? And who is the Vermont Creative Network? So, when we're talking through our statewide plans, I will also make sure to talk through how to find your legislator and how to see, you know, what committees they're on and get in contact with them. Some really simple resources. So, again, our advocacy toolbox is here. Just a quick reminder for folks before we dig into what are some of our advocacy tools. So, when we are thinking through, working through strategic planning efforts, let's dig into the 2016 Town Plan Study. In this, we found that 104 town plans mention the arts and cultural sector either using single words or words in conjunction with others. Close to 10% of Vermont town plans have a section or chapter in which some aspect of this plays significantly. And a total of 93 goals, 82 policies, and 164 action steps related to the creative economy were identified. What this means is that, yeah, we're getting the word out there about the creative economy, but we have a long way to go before we really institutionalize it on the creative level for municipalities. Really digging that in and making sure that folks understand the term creative economy and what are the opportunities for them to support it. I also want to make sure to talk about the role of regional planning commissions. So, all across the state, we have regional planning commissions. These are folks who work with our municipalities. So, if you don't know who, for example, to contact at your local town, who's managing your American Rescue Plan Act funds on the local level, you should contact your regional planning commission. These are the folks who are working through all of the ARPA funds. They're providing training, they're supporting folks and working through them. It's really important to make sure to work with your regional planning commissions also because they do an incredible job of finding that federal opportunities that are provided to local governments. So, if you have a local library, for example, the state library office is incredible, but there might also be some infrastructure money that you can get through the regional planning commissions to, say, for example, replace the water infrastructure at your local library. The role of regional planning commissions is to really ensure that that development and infrastructure money comes to towns and to community members. I highly recommend working with these folks. I also want to point out that the Two Rivers and the T R O R C Planning Commission here in central Vermont is a 3CBT zone. Megan is our incredible zone agent there, and she works for the Two Rivers Planning Commission and does a phenomenal job in our 3CBT zone of working with creatives all across that section. So, you know, we're already working with regional planning commissions, but I highly recommend that y'all get out and work with them too. We also have the role of economic development corporations. So, these folks work in close partnership with regional planning entities. And in some instances, they actually overlap and are a combined entity. So, you can find some examples of that in Bennington County, where these folks actually collaborated and became one entity to serve the county. These folks really work closely with municipalities and especially if you're working with chambers of commerce to find funding for local businesses, for museums, for C3s and nonprofits. And again, when they're talking through regional strategic plans, those plans that really help to identify what are some federal funding priorities on the local level for these areas of the state, reaching out to economic development corporations is really important. And on each of these slides, you can see where to find those. But also, here's a quick map of each part of the state. It has a colored outline for where each of your economic development corporations live. Okay. I now want to dig into our statewide advocacy plan. So, we have three key priorities this legislative session. The first is to see if we can find $150,000 in the budget to implement the Create VT Action Plan. So, again, the VCN was created by the Vermont Legislature in 2016. We love our work getting to work to support the creative economy all across the state. We need to make sure that we get some backbone support to continue to support creatives and do this advocacy work on behalf of the creative economy. Priority two, we are going to try to ask for a little additional funding in the Vermont and State Buildings Program, about $75,000. It's been funded at $50,000 up until this point, so it's only a $25,000 increase, not anything major. But as we're seeing inflation, we want to make sure that we're trying to pay our artists who are providing our Art and State Buildings Programs work a little more equitably. And then, our third priority is to make sure that we're expanding support for the Vermont Humanities Council, which is a key stakeholder in our work and who serves on the Create VT Steering Team. The Vermont Humanities Council is interested in expanding their community grantmaking with a $59,000 increase. They are one of the partner organizations that is a statewide arts agency in Vermont. So, we have the Vermont Arts Council, we have the Humanities, we have two others across the state that really work to support the arts and cultural sector. So, we like to collaborate, making sure that we're supporting the creative economy. I want to highlight two specific resources, both for the municipal work that we do and for the statewide work that we do. So, the first, coming back to our municipal efforts, there is a really great document that we have that can be found on that resources page that I've showed y'all a couple times now. And this was created with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's specifically about how to use your municipal ARPA funds to empower the creative sector. This is a resource that, again, can be found on our Create VT website. And then, I also want to show you on the statewide level, where can you find your And then I also want to show you on the statewide level, where can you find your legislator? So we have a lot of new legislators in Vermont this year. I'm sure a lot of you are incredibly engaged in this Vermont legislative process. But just in case, or in case you're someone who's new to the state, I wanted to point out that on our legislature.vermont.gov website, you can find your legislator. You can find them by name as a legislator themselves, or you can find them by your city and town. So I, for example, live in Royalton. Ooh. Maybe they haven't been loaded yet. Oh, last session. Well, let's try a different way. Let's see if we can do this, where I can actually find you a legislator. How about? Well, this is where this lives. Sorry that this is being a little strange. Let's try this one more time and see if it's just a Wi-Fi issue, since we're coming into this storm. Funky. Okay. So anyway, sorry that this is sort of a failing moment here, but bear with me as we continue to work through technical issues in the middle of pandemics. Generally, what you can find on this page is you can see your legislator, you can find them by city and town. If you want to find just all of the legislators across the state, here's another way to do it in case the system isn't working. No problem. You can find them by your district. You can also find them by name here. I would make sure to say that when working with the Vermont Legislature, that it's important to check in and see who's working on specific committees. For example, there's nine out of 14 chairs in the House this year that have turned over. So a lot of change in the legislature, and we really just need to get folks up to speed and educate folks as much as possible. That's what this session is really about. So now that I've gone through our key priorities. Taking us back here. Right? We've gone through why advocate for the creative sector, who we are. We've talked about research and then resources in that toolbox that I outlined to you, the Create VT Action Plan, as well as other, you know, what are sort of the creative economy documents that we have in those zone brief and creative segment documents? Those seven segments of the creative economy again. We talked about opportunities on the local level with strategic plans, and we also talked about ensuring that we're working with regional planning and economic development entities to access federal and state grants for municipalities and to work on that strategic plan effort. And then we talked about our statewide advocacy goals. So now that we've sort of gone through the top-line efforts of our work this year, and we've talked about where to find all of these resources, I want to stop sharing my screen, take a minute, and say, are there any really high-level pieces of feedback that especially someone from the Vermont Arts Council staff, Molly, Michelle, or Catherine, that you would like to add to this presentation?
I think that you about covered it, Johanna. Yeah, it's very complete. We have our three main asks, and that's what we're going to be focusing on this time. And relationship building is very important with all the new folks.
Yep, thank you. And I want to give a shout out to Catherine. We have been doing a lot to make sure that we are ready to get legislators up to speed. So we're going to have a bunch of documents ready for you all coming up in the new year to support our progress on the Create VT Action Plan. So just keep an eye out for that. But I just wanted to give Catherine a shout out, since she's joined us tonight for her work on that, and say to keep an eye open on our website. That's going to be another resource that I'll send y'all's way. Any other quick questions, high-level questions, before I turn off our recording and dig in a little bit more into some off-the-record Q and As? Okay, wonderful. I want to say thank you so much to everyone for joining us. Really appreciate it. Thank you to Ashley again for closed captioning for us tonight. We're all going to stay here and have this detailed conversation, but please don't hesitate to contact me at the Vermont Arts Council or one of our six zone agents to find out how you can get involved for advocating for the creative economy, either on the local, regional, or statewide level in 2023. Looking forward to working with all of you.